Welcome to the December 14th, 2023 Parma City School District Board of Education meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Ms. Nusio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Present.
Mr. Ruda.
Present.
Mrs. Schwark.
Present.
Mr. Striker.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present. Dr. Smilak, can you please confirm this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
Can you please monitor the livestream throughout the meeting, and if there's a problem, please speak up immediately so that technical difficulty can be addressed?
Yes, we will.
Thank you, sir. All right. So, let's start off with the Parma proud, Dr. Smilak.
Yes, we have families tonight from Valley Forge. Again, just to remind everyone who might be watching, we have asked our principals to select five families who have overcome some type of adversity in their life and have some type of challenging situations which could deter them from giving all of their efforts and all of their energy toward attaining a great education, and yet, they have not been deterred. They have shown resilience, and they have shown a commitment to education, and we're very proud of the efforts that Ms. Andruszewski will describe this evening. So, Ms. Andruszewski, if you want to come to the podium, and Mr. Vaughn and I will come down.
Thank you for having us tonight. So, when we, at the high school level, you know, Dr. Smilak had asked us to identify families that have gone through adversity. At the high school level, we deal more with individual students and their emotions and the struggles and adversity that they are facing. Many of the times, we don't know what their story is. What I have found out through this process with the five students that were identified by my counselors is that every one of our students has a story, and every one of their stories is different, even if they live in the same household. And unfortunately, most of the time, we don't know what their story is. So, we deal with anger and emotions and trauma, and we're trying to educate a child, but we don't know their story. We don't know the background and the experiences that they have had, so it makes it very difficult. So, I'm really, really proud of these students that I have here tonight with me because it takes a very brave person to share their story, and I sat with them. They were very kind of surprised when I told them that they were going to be recognized, and I asked them, you know, what they would be willing for me to share. And I wrote up my little script. I shared it with them yesterday and today to run it past them, and they all gave me the okay for the stories that I'm going to share with you tonight. So, the first person that we're recognizing is Bella Cox. So, Bella, come on up here. Where do you guys want her? Come on over here, Bella. So, Bella is a senior who came to Valley Forge in her junior year. Prior to coming to Parma City Schools, she attended Lutheran West. Bella has dealt with many home issues as well as issues of abuse throughout her life. She really struggled in her sophomore year when her biological father left. Also, at this time, she was dealing with issues of intolerance and maltreatment at her school due to her being a member of the LGBT community. Through all of her challenges, Bella has goals and dreams for herself. Do you guys want me to start over? Did you guys get that? Let me start that over because I don't think her family heard what I was saying here. So, all right, let's back up. So, Bella is a senior who came to Valley Forge her junior year. Prior to coming to Parma Schools, she attended Lutheran West. Bella's dealt with many home issues as well as issues of abuse throughout her life. She really struggled in her sophomore year when her biological father left. Also, at this time, she was dealing with issues of intolerance and maltreatment at her school due to her being a member of the LGBTQ community. Through all of her challenges, Bella has goals and dreams for herself. She is working to break the cycle and become only the third high school graduate in her family. Her sister and her cousin were the first two to do this. She has applied to Ohio State Mansfield, and I am happy to report, she just told me today, she just found out she got accepted.
Oh, yay.
And she wants to become a K-12 art teacher. Bella's always used art as an escape from the situations that she has faced. She has taken many courses, gone to art camps, and watched hours of video to learn to draw over the years. Her artwork depicts the emotions that she and others are feeling at the time. She created a piece during the Black Lives Matter movement and sold over 60 original pieces.
Oh, wow.
Through all of this, Bella works many hours at Walmart to be able to pay bills. Her work ethic provided her with the opportunity to become shift leader. When I met and spoke with Bella, she was not sure of the definition of resilience. I will tell you now that all she has to do is look in the mirror to see what it means as she and her actions are the definition of resilience. Congratulations, Bella. We are so proud of you. My next student is Kylie Hagerman. Kylie and whoever you brought, come on up here. All right. Kylie is a sophomore at Valley Forge. She has faced many challenges at home revolving around addiction and incarceration. Fortunately, Kylie had the influence of her great-grandmother and her grandmother, both of whom were, her great-grandmother passed, and are, her grandmother, strong and resilient women. Kylie came to the self-realization that she wanted a different life for herself and has set high goals for herself. Ultimately, she wants to attend an Ivy League school. To do so, she is challenging herself with AP and honors courses. She plans to start taking CCP courses and wants to enroll in a CTE program. Her goal is to earn an honors diploma from Valley Forge. She also ensures that she distances herself in and out of school from individuals that use vapes, drugs, and alcohol so that she does not get sucked into that lifestyle. She is a kind, polite, and positive individual, and is also a prime example of resilience. Kylie, we're very proud of you. Next, I have another Kylie, Kylie Angel, and your mom, come on down. All right. Kylie is a sophomore at Valley Forge this year. This is her first year with us as she attended Parma Senior High previously. Kylie came to Parma Schools from Cleveland Schools in the middle of her seventh grade year. She really began to struggle in eighth grade when she was informed about the identity of her biological father and siblings that she didn't know she had. At that time, her family also experienced the death by suicide of a family member. She has since made great strides and put in a strong effort to get herself back on track and stay there. Kylie's taking the initiative to join the Explorer Post to get hands-on experience for law enforcement as her love of dogs has given her an interest in being a canine police officer. We're extremely proud of Kylie and the resilience that she has shown. Way to go, kid. All right. Gabby and family, come on down. Okay, next up is Gabby Lozano-Cortado. Gabby's a senior at Valley Forge and has faced much adversity in her life. Gabby is part of a very supportive family, but sadly, that family has gotten smaller. In the summer of 2022, she lost her grandmother, a person who taught her many life lessons and also how to cook some delicious Puerto Rican dishes. Her father, who immigrated to the U.S. from Mexico when he was 18, died of cancer in October of '22. These losses intensified mental health issues that Gabby started having during COVID. In July of 2023, Gabby was diagnosed with thyroid cancer and underwent surgery. She continues to deal with her health issues while trying to focus on school, but I'm proud to report that Gabby just informed me today she found out last week that she is cancer-free. Through all of this, Gabby has maintained the goal to be the first of her father's children to graduate from high school and attend college. She is working to earn an honors diploma and is waiting to hear about college acceptance. Gabby wants to become a behavior specialist, a career choice inspired by having a cousin with autism. She hopes to be able to provide help to families struggling to support children with autism. Gabby's mom has worked closely with the school to ensure that Gabby has gotten the support that she has needed throughout all these struggles, and we are grateful for her partnership with us. We are very proud of Gabby and look forward to celebrating her graduation with her. Samaya and family, come on down. Cutie. Okay, this is Samaya Graves. Samaya came to Valley Forge from Shaw High School at the start of her junior year last year. Throughout her life, she has lived on and off with her mother, moving from her mom to aunties and her grandmother. She suffered the loss of her grandmother, who was a very big influence in her life when she was in fifth grade. Last year, she had to move again from her mom, who had moved to Parma, and she moved in with her aunt that lives in Garfield. As a McKinney-Vento student, Samaya chose to remain in the Parma City Schools because of the medical program. The move away from her mom, all the challenges and the difficulty with finding transportation caused Samaya's grades to suffer in all her core courses. Our home liaison, Mrs. Argerakis, found the supports that Samaya needed, and medical teacher, Mrs. Morgan, became a supporting role model for her. Samaya has her grades back on track this year and has a goal of entering the medical field after high school, possibly in the field of physical training. We're so happy that Samaya chose to stay with us and that we could give her the support that she needs to be successful. Congratulations.
We know that many of our students, you know, have a lot of challenges and adversity, but wow, to hear it firsthand tonight and to see you and hear some of the victories that you're now experiencing, very, very powerful, and we're very grateful for your commitment to education. We know that there are so many different obstacles that you've had to overcome and so many decisions where you could have made them differently and not been with us tonight celebrating these successes. So, if we can all give all of our families one more round of applause. Thank you, Ms. Andruszewski, for sharing those and making sure that students were okay with us sharing all those details. It's an important part. We never want to bring someone and expose a part of their life that they weren't comfortable with, so very grateful for the time that you invested into this. Families, you can certainly depart now. It's a socially appropriate time to leave. You're more than welcome to stay for our meeting, but it is a business meeting, and I'm not sure it'll be too entertaining for you. So, thank you again for coming, and again, one last round of applause for our Valley Forge families. Those were incredible stories. I mean, it was one after another. I really, my heart goes out to all of you. Thank you. Thank you.
Can I just make a comment?
Absolutely. You may.
I thank you, Dr. Smilak, for choosing this as a spotlight for each of our schools this year. We don't often have an opportunity to have this at a board meeting, and this is an outstanding representation of a lot of what students deal with that people don't understand, especially if you come from perhaps a family that has not had a lot of obstacles to overcome. I think it's important for all of us to be reminded and the community to recognize that many of our students have a backstory that interferes with their ability to be successful, and it also speaks to the great support that we offer children in Parma City Schools, that they come to us during the day and they have good role models and people that are there willing to help them overcome many of these kinds of challenges. So, thank you for spotlighting that this year. I'm really pleased to see this.
Thank you. I think it's been very powerful. It was. We turn to Ms. Plageman. Ms. Plageman, who is our Director of Strategic Initiatives, really led the effort this year to get Project Lead the Way into our schools, involved in a STEM elective that we offer to our middle school students. And we offer so many different niche classes that I think are extremely engaging, but this is a brand-new one, and we wanted to highlight this because this was part of what we presented last year when we talked to you about structural changes in our middle schools in terms of our master schedule. So, when we started, and it was funny that, you know, the Impact Group tonight talked about doing SWOT analysis, that's exactly how we started in the summer of 2018, and one of the weaknesses we identified was the 90-minute block study hall. It was really a concern amongst families, it was certainly a concern amongst our middle school educators. There was a lot of downtime, and so we've really chipped away at that, doing the best we can to not increase staffing and not increase, you know, any type of fiscal responsibility piece, but this has really been a crowning achievement of trying to chip away at that middle school schedule and offer students more than just that extended amount of really study hall time. So, we're very proud of the STEM program, STEM being essentially what these Project Lead the Way courses have embodied. Ms. Plageman was really behind really a lot of the nuts and bolts, if not all of the nuts and bolts, of bringing a lot of equipment into the classes, making sure our teachers were trained, certainly making sure that the funding piece was accounted for because we do get some reimbursement, a little bit higher reimbursement from the state for these classes. So, Ms. Plageman will describe the many victories that have been inherent to our Project Lead the Way program. Ms. Plageman?
Well, thank you, Dr. Smilak. President Vaughn, board members, Dr. Smilak, and our community, thank you for allowing me to come this evening to present on our Project Lead the Way STEM Encore courses at the middle school. It's very fitting, last week, we ended the first trimester, so it's very exciting to provide you with an update. So, first of all, we always like to lead our meetings with our district goals, and our presentation this evening will be focusing on increasing student achievement. Just a little bit of a recap, our Encore Middle School STEM courses are trimester courses. They're a combination of Project Lead the Way, PLTW curriculum, and career development activities. And our seventh and eighth grade students actually meet our requirement with, I'm going to use that O-D-E-W, formerly Ohio Department of Education, our middle school career tech requirement. So, we have to provide career tech courses to our middle school students in seventh and eighth grade, so these courses are meeting that requirement. So, first of all, in fifth grade, our course is called Green Energy Exploration. So, this is a combination of Project Lead the Way, energy and the environment, and I kind of italicized some of the key factors. So, it's sustainable solutions to our energy needs, the impact of energy on our lives in the world, and students coming up with alternative energy sources for reducing our energy consumption. So, in addition to the Project Lead the Way curriculum, students are also engaged in career development activities. Some of the highlights of our fifth-grade course from the Project Lead the Way curriculum is Energy Comes in Many Forms, Energy Crossroads, Next Frontier, Wind Energy, Measuring Energy, Water Audit, The Product Life Cycle, Heat Transfer, and Penguin Dwellings. So, now we'd like to showcase some of our students. These are some of our students in fifth grade that are doing the Heat Transfer Igloo project, and students are, first, they learn about the different forms of energy and energy conservation, and then they're challenged to transfer that information into a thermal energy project, and they have to use recyclable materials. So, they can't, we're not buying anything, so we bring in a bunch of recyclable materials, and the students have to measure how much mass the penguin has lost at its new home, and then they do their calculations in their Project Lead the Way notebook, and they record them, and then they present them. So, those are some of our students in our Heat Transfer Igloo project in fifth grade, and these are some additional students in the Penguin dwellings with the heat conduction. In sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we have a course called Medical Technology, which is a combination of Project Lead the Way Medical Detectives and, again, Career Development Activities. So, in the Medical Technology course, again, I italicized some of the key points of our curriculum. So, students are collecting and analyzing medical data to diagnose diseases. Students are doing hands-on projects in labs to measure and interpret vital signs, examine nervous system structure and function, and investigate disease outbreaks. Some of our highlights of our Project Lead the Way curriculum in the Medical Technology is the hands-on labs and vital signs, disease agents, disease diagnosis, diagnostic detectives, secrets of the nervous system, the control center, mystery disease, food fiasco, and disease detectives. Who wouldn't want to learn this stuff? These are great names. So, this is one of our labs that the students are doing in sixth grade. So, all sixth, seventh, and eighth graders were doing the same kind of curriculum. So, the sixth graders were doing the neuron model, and then our, this is some photos of our sixth-grade students in the vital signs. So, in this unit, they kind of learned the uses of vital signs and what the normal ranges are, and then they kind of do the tests, check the vital signs on themselves, and then one of their co-classmates. So, in seventh grade, this is one of our other labs that we do. It's called the neurotoxin lab, and students take everything that they've learned in the trimester course, and they solve a citywide disease. So, it's a lot of problem-solving, collaboration with their team, with their co-classmates, presentations, hands-on labs, so the students really enjoy the curriculum. Also, in seventh grade, I'm focusing on the sheep brain dissection. So, students are learning the different parts of the human brain and their responsibilities, and then they put that identification into practice. And here, we're showcasing our eighth-grade students doing their vital signs labs in the classroom. Eighth-grade students in the neurotoxin lab. And now, we would like to showcase a video of some of our students and what they think of it.
My name is Katia, and I'm in seventh grade.
Hi, my name is Brooklyn, and I'm in seventh grade.
My favorite part about the medical department class was dissecting the sheep brain and finding out respiratory rates of vital signs.
My favorite part of the class was dissecting the sheep brain and figuring out vital signs and dosing them.
I'm in fifth grade, and my favorite part about PLTW was collaborating with my teammates and making igloos, seeing how much and how long to see if the penguin and the igloo could help.
My name is Kylie Miller, I'm in seventh grade, and I'm looking forward to dissecting animals.
Hi, my name is Landon, I'm in fifth grade, and my favorite part about Project Lead the Way was my teacher, Ms. James, and the way she ran the class.
My favorite project was the building of winter vines. So, we had a certain list of materials, and we had to build, so the teacher made the base, and we had to build the blades, and we had to try to see who could get, who could get the most, 360, the most high, or like, kind of like, fan.
So, as I mentioned earlier, it's a combination of Project Lead the Way curriculum and career development activities. So, some of our career development activities that we have in the courses are STEM Career Scavenger Hunt, a Career Finder activity, Building Your Professional Identity, On the Job with STEM. They do a STEM Career Vision Board. They're doing an Engineer Career Scavenger Hunt and an Engineer Careers booklet. Moving forward, so for next year, we will be doing the Green Energy Exploration in fifth grade, Medical Technology in sixth grade, and then we'll be rolling out Design and Modeling. And Design and Modeling is providing students with an introduction to design, solid modeling, where students take a 2D image and create it into a 3D image, and then they have a design challenge. Students in Design and Modeling will be using 3D printers and CAD computer-aided design software. And that is the conclusion of my presentation. Is there any questions from the board?
I have more comments than I do questions.
Okay.
Yeah. Project Lead the Way, as you know, I have a soft heart for that whole curriculum, obviously because of my science background, but more because my children went through it. And the latter, I don't want to be a braggart, but she's doing pretty good. She's going to be in the schools to speak on the 21st.
Oh, good.
So, heck, I'll tell you, she's an engineer for Boeing. She's, I'm pretty proud of her.
And, Mr. Vaughn, your daughter was actually by, in the first group of the class that we had.
First group of that, yeah. Sorry, I get a little choked up. All that stuff, that was bad. It's got me going, and it's already going to be a rough meeting, so. All right. So, anyway, that was my comment. It's real. So, I love that program, and I just, if we can get that to go across the board, that'd be fantastic, but I know that's difficult, but thank you for your presentation.
But it is across the board in that we have it in all three middle schools, and all of our students have the eligibility to take that.
Excellent. Excellent. I think it was stuck somewhere. Anybody else?
Heck, yeah. This is just such an exciting amount of curriculum and offerings for students. I can't imagine there's one that's not excited to go to class to participate in these kinds of activities. It's so hands-on, it's so relatable and interesting to what they're doing, and I'm just thrilled that we're able to offer it for our kids, and thank you, Ms. Plageman, for all you do to bring these sorts of things. We're certainly used to this for so many years in the career tech programs, but I know your responsibilities have expanded, and this is outstanding. It's just, you know, wonderful for our kids. I'm looking forward to going to the capstone at Greenbrier next week and see what the kids have been doing and participating in that. So, thank you for all you do to make this happen. It's exciting and a great opportunity for kids.
Thank you.
Yeah, it is an excellent program. My fifth grader comes home telling me what he learns, literally every day, and there's been times, "Dad, I'm not feeling great, but I really want to go to school because of this curriculum." So, it is very effective. It does energize the students, and I am very grateful for it as a parent. It does energize the students, and I am very grateful for it as a parent.
Thank you.
You know something good's going on when a fifth grader comes home and is gabbing about all this stuff.
Dad, I want to go to school today.
Yeah, isn't that great?
Love to hear that.
Isn't that great?
Anybody else?
Okay. Ms. Plageman, thank you very much. And, you know, when I say she was integral, and, you know, she was literally in 92-degree days carrying supplies in the classroom, so certainly she sees the big picture, but also takes care of a lot of those nuts and bolts, and we're glad that she and Dr. Cruz are collaborating for the future of the program as well, to make sure that we continue to grow this. And we're excited to continue to have these opportunities for our students and to our fifth through eighth graders. So thank you, Ms. Plageman.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have one other announcement. We do have a calendar that we're formalizing at this point. State of Ohio law provides that we will post the calendar, so we'll do this tomorrow morning. We cannot adopt a calendar before the public has had an opportunity to comment on the calendar for 30 days. So we would actually present this for board approval on the 24th of January, which we anticipate being the second board meeting. But we will again start after Labor Day next year. We adopted Calendar B, which was out for input from our employees, all of them. Calendar B, again, starts after Labor Day, concludes on June 13th, is teacher's last day, June 12th is student's last day. I will tell you that as we built this calendar, there are not a lot of different variables that you can play with. The only real variable that was something that we could manipulate a little bit was spring break. And at the same time, we didn't want to drop spring break right into the middle of prime testing season, which tends to be April. Unfortunately, next year Easter is very late, so folks that are used to having Easter Monday off will be disappointed when they see the calendar. But again, the only other option would have been to go all the way to June 16th, so not a lot of different options to present a calendar. But this was the one that emerged from popular vote. Again, we will put this on our website tomorrow, and the public can certainly comment on it. And we'll present this to you formally on what we anticipate being January 24th is our second board meeting.
Okay.
24th or 25th?
Thank you.
25th. My apologies. And that concludes my report, Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you, sir. Takes us to Communications. Board members, anybody got anything?
I do.
Communicate. You do?
I do.
Oh. Fire away.
I start on a sad note this evening, announcing to Parma City School community that, about the passing of Mr. Rick Meeks. He was the treasurer for the Parma City Schools Foundation, as well as the president of the Valley Forge High School Alumni Association, and has years of service and involvement in the school district, obviously an alum also of Valley Forge. And he had a lengthy battle with heart disease that ended yesterday, so I'm sorry to report that to everyone. As we're approaching winter break, it's a really busy time in the schools, of course, and there have been, and continue to be, it's not over yet, many choir and band concerts in our schools, as well as in the community. And a couple of, or several of our performing groups actually have ventured out into the community and had presentations. There's been the Normandy High School Choir, they have visited the Parma Senior Center, as well as the Seven Hills Senior Center, or Rec Center, with their senior population. And it was great, not only to see the performances, but to have the kids interacting with the community, too. We have so many talented students, and it's great for the community to see that, because they don't always get a chance to. The Valley Forge High School Choir also performed at the Parma Heights Senior Center and invited seniors to sing along, and several of them did so. Also, we had, just this morning, we had the Normandy Jazz Band performed at the Parma Senior Center, and that was very much enjoyed by many folks. So we're having a lot of fun with that and showcasing the talent of our students. Parma Schools, we also participated in Frosty Fest, which is the City of Parma holiday celebration that follows their parade. That was on December 3rd, and several of us were there for that. And the line for Santa was around the building. The cosmetology students from Normandy came and did face painting for the children, as well as did sparkly hair threads for those that were interested. So that was a lot of fun as well. So many of the community members at each of these different events expressed thanks and how much they really appreciated the kids coming and getting an opportunity to see them perform. And it was also, someone said, came up to me after one of the performances this morning and said, "This is so great to see these kids come out and visit us. They need to do more of that in the community." So thanks to Dr. Smilek and to the building administration for making it possible, thanks to Nancy Fedak as well. She's a senior community liaison here in the district, and she arranges for many of these events with our kids. So it's been pretty great. And I think I can say on behalf of all of the board that we wish everyone a very safe and healthy and joyous holiday season. Have a great break, get some rest, and come back ready to learn in January. And that's it for Communications.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Bratz. You have something, Ms. Nusio?
I do. So this is directly from the Ohio, now they're called DO, but I copied and pasted, even though the third paragraph says, "The Ohio Department of Education," they haven't updated their webpage. Obviously, our biggest source of revenue are property taxes and state funding, but we try to maximize as much revenue as possible with other sources. And this is Medicaid billing, or Medicaid reimbursement, where our therapists offer or provide services to these students, and we have a Medicaid biller who works with the therapist and the special ed department to make sure all the billing is proper, so we can, we can bill Medicaid and get these services, partially the services reimbursed to the district. So we just, also I should mention Monica and Kristanik in special ed. She does a lot of help with the Medicaid review that we get. Medicaid review is just like an audit, so we get audited every year. Julian Group CPA firm requires all this documentation, and Monica is a big help. And we just finished the 2022 audit, because they're always 18 months behind, and our reimbursement's going to be almost $1.2 million. So we do have in the forecast, five-year forecast, a million dollars per year for the Medicaid reimbursement. And this is just another source of income that I'm sure a lot of people do not know that we pursue, and there's a lot of people involved in making sure we get this money for the district and the services provided to the students. That's all I have for that. Unless you guys have questions on it.
All right, thank you. To be said, I can't.
Here.
I don't have any questions. I actually don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. I thank you for getting this done, and I'm sure that it was important for these families to have that taken care of. Edit?
Yes, that's it.
All right. Okay, moving really along here, is Public Participation today? Do we have any of those? No. Okay. So we have Adoption of Amendments.
We do have a change in later in the section. It does not involve a resolution, but it involves appointing a pro temp, president pro temp.
Yeah, that's.
For organizational meeting, but we'd also have a special meeting on January 3rd, 2024, which we would need to appoint the same person to hold, to be in charge of the meeting.
Oh.
That's the only amendment we would have.
So do I need to move this resolution along here, or no? Do you just know that it's happening?
It's just happening. We're not changing any of the resolutions.
So I can move on to curriculum?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so this brings us to curriculum, Mrs. Bratz.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2023-12-619, authorizing the Parma City School District Board of Education to enter into a resolution of acceptance in the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission Career Technical Construction Program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-12-619. Any questions or comments from the board?
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
Just wanted to emphasize that, you know, obviously, we tried to work through two different bond issues extensively with the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission. This is very different. Obviously, the funding source is the same in that it is the OCC, but this is unique to a specific grant that Ms. Plageman applied for and received, and this is specific to career tech space. We're very thrilled that we have this, because, you know, our challenge now is to, we know what our footprint is, and let's make these facilities everything they can possibly be for our students. But I want to again emphasize that this is unique to this career tech space. It will be at Normandy. It will have welding and auto shop, which we have not discontinued. We still have it, but this will be more of a 21st century learning environment for those students and teachers. And just wanted to emphasize again, this is not participation in any type of, you know, rebuilding entire schools, specific to this career tech space.
Thank you.
That's a lot of money.
It's a very impressive grant, and again, thank you to Kristen for her work on this.
Absolutely.
We're really excited for the space that we'll be able to build. Obviously, you know, you see it on the resolution, but it's a 5,947-foot renovation, additional square foot, 4,500 square feet, and again, that's for, I said welding, I'm sorry, it's carpentry and auto collision.
All right. Okay, anybody else? No. Roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Striker?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes. Resolution 2023-12-619 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2023-12-620, authorizing agreement for Power School enrollment registration software.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-12-620. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call Ms. Nusio.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Striker?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes. Resolution 2023-12-620 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of 2023-12-621, approval of overnight out-of-state field trips, hillside and Shiloh DC trip, 2024, Normandy High School athletic trips.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-12-621. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nusio.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Striker?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes. Resolution 2023-12-621 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2023-12-622, approval of the overnight out-of-state, out-of-country field trips, Normandy out-of-country trips, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-12-622. Any question or comments from the board? I believe this is Spanish trip.
No, Japan, and then Ireland, England, and France. Can I be a chaperone on the Ireland trip?
No, I won't be on that trip. Holy smokes.
Yeah, can I go back to high school and go on all these trips?
We really are. Being able to, and again, obviously, students fund these, fundraising and personal contributions, but it's really exciting to be able to continue to offer these opportunities for our students.
I don't know why I thought that was Spanish, but good for them. That's a nice trip. Anyway, anybody else?
No, I was going to say, those are cool trips.
Cool trips.
That's my birthday week, too.
Birthday week? Nice one, make sure you get attached. Ms. Nusio, please.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Striker?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes. Resolution 2023-12-622 has been approved, pending Mr. Vaughn being a chaperone. Kidding.
For $6,000, you can go to Japan, too.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss regarding curriculum, that will conclude curriculum for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Bratz, I appreciate it. This is business, Mr. Ruda.
Yes, I move to adopt Resolution 2023-12-623, authorization for professional design firm for the expansion of career technical education facilities at Normandy High School.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-12-623. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Striker?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes. Resolution 2023-12-623 has been approved.
Yeah, I move to adopt Resolution 2023-12-624, resolution to approve real estate purchase agreement and sale of a 30-foot by 115-foot of vacant land of Kaihoga County, permanent parcel number 449-08-039 for $8,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-12-624. Any questions or comments from the board?
Can I comment on that?
Absolutely, sir.
This is a slice of land that abuts a private property owner near the, abuts a owner of a home that is adjacent to the Renwood property. So this is a very small slice, obviously, you see the 30 by 115 feet. He approached us actually and wanted to do some improvement to his lot. This was supported by the councilwoman in that area, Debbie Lime, who advocated on his behalf, and so we were able to set a price that was really based on square footage of vacant lots, sort of the average in Parma, and so that's what you see reflected is the $8,000 price. Folks have asked, you know, are we concerned about how that would impact the overall sale at some point of Renwood? And it's such a small slice, we really felt like this was sort of a good neighbor sort of mindset, because this was a gentleman who, again, was supported by the councilwoman, and we felt like we wanted to help him out through the sale instead of, you know, trying to, trying to reject his offer. But again, it is a fair market value that we determined in consultation with our attorney.
Thank you. I recall that happening. It was like a year ago, wasn't it?
Yeah, I'd say he approached us this summer. It's taken some time, you know, on both sides to make sure we were at a fair agreement.
Okay, very good, very good. Anybody else?
Ms. Nusio, please.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm out of order. Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Striker?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes. Resolution 2023-12-624 has been approved.
All right, unless another board member has something to discuss, this will conclude business.
Thank you, Mr. Ruda. Finance, Mr. Striker?
Yep. I move to adopt Resolution 2023-12-625, approval of the November financial report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-12-625. Any question or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Striker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes. Resolution 2023-12-625 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2023-12-626, ratification of investments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-12-626. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Striker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes. Resolution 2023-12-626 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2023-12-627, approval of supplemental appropriations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-12-627. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio, please.
Mr. Striker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes. Resolution 2023-12-627 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes finance.
Thank you, Mr. Striker, appreciate you. This brings us to legislation. Mrs. Bratz?
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
Looks like a big paper.
I already did part of it. Couple of things, the Ohio Department of Education, which is still, exists, but has many fewer responsibilities and duties than it used to have, has selected a new state superintendent. It's Mr. Paul Kraft, and he's currently superintendent of Buckeye Valley Local Schools, and he will begin his term on January 1st of 2024, and we wish him well. Now, the new Department of Education and Workforce, DO, that everybody's getting used to, was put into a place by Governor DeWine and has now taken over many of the functions and responsibilities of the Ohio Department of Education. Governor DeWine has selected Steve Dakin as the new state superintendent of DO. He was confirmed by the Ohio Senate on December 6th. He has 40 years of experience as a teacher principal, assistant superintendent, and superintendent in school districts in central Ohio. He previously did serve on the State Board of Education. There are a lot of things to be watching in the State House coming up in 2024. I mentioned at our last meeting, but I will mention again that the House Bill 187 regarding an impact on property reevaluations was amended and passed by the Ohio Senate earlier this month. One of the changes is the expansion of the Homestead Act for eligible seniors, and it also increases the amount for veterans. Districts will be reimbursed for half of the loss of the revenue. Joint vocational districts will get full reimbursement. So there's an estimated loss to education across the state of $97 million from this, but it will benefit seniors that are eligible financially. The bill's now back in the House to consider the changes, and they'll look for a concurrent vote on that. There's a lot of other things going on, so you'll be busy in the new year, looking at a lot of different things that are currently now in committee and have not yet been passed out. And that concludes legislation for this evening.
All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, legislation, let's move on. Human Resources, Mrs. Schwark.
Move to adopt Resolution 2023-12-628, approval of the following certificated exhibits: confirmation of certificated appointments, confirmation of stipend amounts, confirmation of supplemental appointments, and approval of certified non-compensated leaves of absence. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-12-628. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nucio.
Mrs. Schwark.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Striker.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2023-12-628 has been approved.
Move to adopt Resolution 2023-12-629, acceptance of certified retirements. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-12-629. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nucio.
Mrs. Schwark.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Striker.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2023-12-629 has been approved.
Move to adopt Resolution 2023-12-630, to approve the early retirement incentive letter of agreement between the Board of Education and the Parma Education Association. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-12-630. Any questions or comments from the board before, do you would you like to speak on that?
I would. This is a, I think it's an exciting offer, honestly, to our staff, but also it's exciting to the district in that I've always referred to, you know, the nuclear options in terms of fiscal responsibility. So what do we always want to avoid in terms of how we want to spend money? First, we want to avoid class sizes of 30, 32, 34 students. Always want to avoid that. Second, we want to avoid any type of trimming of extracurricular or extra, I should say, elective classes at the high school. We want to make sure that we continue to offer a full day of instruction and never have to get to a point where we're at, you know, you only can take five, and then you have to go home because we just can't afford the staff. And some high schools in the area have actually done that. And then the third is we want to avoid some type of colossal pay-for-play where you're looking at, you know, $1,200 bill to play football. Certainly not, you know, an equalizing factor across our district. So always trying to avoid those nuclear options. We have to always be creative in how we cut spending, essentially. And certainly, the consolidation was a huge piece of what we had to do, and that's, you know, we haven't done the final numbers, but we believe a $3.1 million savings to our general fund. This is another creative way to essentially cut costs by looking at the top of our payroll in terms of our certified staff, folks that have really climbed up the seniority ladder and are, you know, making a very healthy salary and saying, hey, you know, is this something you want to continue to do? Certainly, this is an opt-in for employees. This is not a forced resignation or retirement. But anytime you're able to replace a most senior teacher with a least senior teacher, that's a significant savings of approximately $40,000 to $45,000. And if you multiply that out by 10 or 20 teachers, then obviously, you're looking at $400,000 or $800,000 to your savings every year. And so we're very grateful to our PEA leadership. Ms. Messinger is here. Very grateful to Dr. Schneider, grateful to Mr. Nucio as well. It was really a collaborative effort that came out with this agreement. We will send this now to our staff upon your approval and anticipate that we will have a good amount of folks that want to participate. We did put a minimum of 22 staff members that would have to opt into this for it to actually to take effect. We anticipate that we won't have a problem doing that. That's going to be approximately a $400,000 savings, as I emphasized before. So always looking for creative ways to trim our general fund expenses, and again, very grateful for the collaboration of all of the partners that helped to engineer this agreement.
All right, thank you. I was wondering if there was a cap on that?
There is no cap. And quite frankly, we anticipate, you know, again, you can't, I don't have a crystal ball, but I think we'll get well past the 22 that we've set as a floor.
Right, you set the floor. That was what I really wanted, not a cap.
Yeah, the floor is 22.
For sure. Okay, 22. All right, very good. Ms. Nucio.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we roll call, buddy.
Mrs. Schwark.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Striker.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2023-12-630 has been approved.
Move to adopt Resolution 2023-12-631, approval of the following classified exhibits: confirmation of classified appointments/replacements, acceptance of classified resignations, confirmation of classified changes, non-compensated leaves of absence is, and confirmation of classified stipend. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-12-631. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nucio.
Mrs. Schwark.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Striker.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2023-12-631 has been approved.
Move to adopt Resolution 2023-12-632, acceptance of classified retirements. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-12-632. Any questions or comments from the board? I'd use a normal question, are we going to see these people in the spring?
We'll certainly invite them, and we hope that they come.
Okay.
Dr. Schneider does a nice job presenting her habits.
Monica Kristanik will be a big loss for the central office. She's in special ed, and she's very knowledgeable, so we will miss her.
Is she going to come?
I don't know if she's going to come to the meeting or not.
Okay. All right, thank you. The roll call, please.
Mrs. Schwark.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Striker.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2023-12-632 has been approved.
Move to adopt Resolution 2023-12-633, revision of the GC5, General Clerk Human Resources, classified job restriction, check that, classified job description and adoption of revised job description. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-12-633. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Schwark.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Striker.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2023-12-633 has been approved.
Move to adopt Resolution 2023-12-634, revision of the GC5 Clerk Human Resources exempt job description and adoption of revised job description. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-12-634. Any questions or comments from the board? Nope, Ms. Nucio, please.
Mrs. Schwark.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Striker.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2023-12-634 has been approved.
Move to adopt the technical change resolutions.
Are you done with?
Oh, yes, I am. I'm sure, I sure am, Mr. Vaughn. I'm done with human resources unless another board member has anything to discuss.
Thank you, Mrs. Schwark. On to you with policies, please.
Okay, thank you. I move to adopt, see, I'm out of my group now.
I'm sorry.
I move to adopt the technical changes of, well, I move to adopt Resolution 2023-12-635, which are the technical changes for policies, 1422, nondiscrimination and equal employment opportunity, policy 1623, Section 504/ADA prohibition against disability discrimination in employment, policy 1662, anti-harassment administration, policy 2260, nondiscrimination and access to equal education opportunity, policy 2260.01, Section 504/ADA prohibition against discrimination based on disability, policy 2266, nondiscrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities, policy 3122, nondiscrimination and equal employment opportunity, policy 3123, Section 504/ADA prohibition against disability discrimination in employment, policy 3362, anti-harassment certified, policy 4122, nondiscrimination and equal employment opportunity, policy 4123, Section 504/ADA prohibition against disability discrimination in employment, and policy 5517, anti-harassment students. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-12-635. Any question or comments from the board?
Can you read that again?
Once I got going, I was good.
I was just glad I didn't have to repeat it. So any questions, comments?
No, these are just compliance officers.
Yeah, we had assigned Dr. Stravko to, I think, all of those, and so obviously, she departed the district, and we had to update our compliance officers.
Very good. Anything else?
No.
No? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Schwark.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Striker.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2023-12-635 has been approved.
That concludes policies.
Thank you.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss.
Thank you. So the business, that brings us to the business of the board. So we have a notice of our 2024 organizational meeting, which is on January 4th, it's a Thursday, and for that, we need to appoint a president pro tam for that organizational meeting and also for the January 3rd retreat that we're doing. If you don't mind.
I don't care.
That I'll just do it, and we'll just flow with it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I just thought it'd be a lot easier. Okay, so that's taking care of that. So information requested by board members. Did you have something?
I mean, I do, I just, we're having a celebration Sunday night, and so I don't want folks to think this is all. But we also have three board members who are here tonight for their last board meeting as part of this term, and I just want to thank each of them. Mr. Striker stepped in knowing that this was a very temporary position, but you have been an absolute joy to work with. He brings a wealth of financial knowledge, but also just a very, you know, grounded presence from his role as a parent as well, of five children, ranging in ages of two to 12, three of which attend our schools.
Four.
Four of which attend our schools. So hope to see you again someday. Mr. Striker asks really excellent questions, but does so in a, you know, very diplomatic way, which we always appreciate. So thank you for your service. Mrs. Bratz, I don't even know how you begin to thank Cindy Bratz for all that she has been. I have, she's probably not going to like this again, but I refer to her as part of the Mount Rushmore of the social fabric of the Parma City Schools. She is one of the four women, along Nancy Fedak down there, Barb Filippo and Sharon Jones, who founded the Parma Schools Foundation. I think she's played every role that the PTA has ever embodied or offered her to play. And really, elected official or not elected official, we know that Cindy will continue to be a part of our school district just because she cares that much. This was clearly not about her children at this point. This wasn't about her grandchildren at this point. She's served two years, 21 to 23, because she cares and because she wanted to make sure that the Parma Schools continue to be a pillar of the community. And I can't, you know, in words, put the adulation, I feel, for all that you've done and all the service that you've lent. And Mrs. Schwark, we are also grateful that you stepped up. She applied in January when we had an opening, and Mrs. Schwark has, despite the fact that, you know, she, this is really, to me, what symbolizes her dedication. Obviously, didn't have the electoral result that she and we would have hoped for in November, and yet never missed a beat. Still wanted to go to every single event that she could go to, still wanted to be at the Frosty Fest, in and out Hershey Kisses, to as many people in Parma as she possibly could. She, too, is a fierce, fierce advocate for our school district. We will certainly miss her presence, but we know that that will not stop. She has a family here as well. Some of them are here in the audience. And so we know that we will continue to see Mrs. Schwark, and we hope to see you up here again one day as well. Thank you for your service.
I'll be there. I'll be there.
All right. So I didn't know you were going to start that, but thank you.
Well, it's okay, because I'm going to go right into it then. So one of the things I wanted first, before I gush over everybody, I went and visited the Teacher Professions, the Career Tech Program Teacher Professions, the other day, and just spoke about what it was like to be on the school board, what my background
board, what my background was, et cetera, et cetera, and what it was like to be on the school board, and what my job entailed. So in my explanation of that, I kept asking about my background questions, what did you do before this? And I said, well, I taught and I coached. And they were more into that and that stuff than they were about me being on the board, which was kind of fun, because it was easy talk. Always brag about yourself, right? And anyway, so what was really cool and why I bring it up is I got this envelope full of thank you notes from the students. And I just wanted to, I'm not going to read them all to you, but I just want to show you that they wrote. And they're very clever, some of them. The one that cracked me up the most was that I liked the fact that you retired twice. And I was like, oh, thanks. I'm looking for a third time here. So anyway, so that was very nice. It was very nice to send that. Thank you very much. Now, if I can get through this without getting verklempt, it'd be a miracle. Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Cindy. Thank you, Angela. So really, what I wrote here, it covers all of these guys, encompasses all of them. First, your willingness to serve the students of Parma City School District. Top-notch. That takes a lot of energy, and it takes a lot of dedication and a lot of compassion, which all you have. Your advocacy for students is beyond compare that I've ever seen out of people, and it's genuine. It's not forced. It was genuine. And I admire that. Your dedication exceeded any expectations. I never doubted to the board. Your preparation for meetings was spot-on. You guys were ready. Nobody was scrambling around trying to figure out what was going on. They were ready to go. They did their homework. Your efforts to be visible in the schools, to support our students, doesn't go unnoticed. It doesn't go unnoticed by the teachers. It doesn't go unnoticed by the staff. It didn't go unnoticed, especially by the students. So thank you, and thank you for your service to the Parma City School District. So who gets the hug first, you or me? Because I'm done talking. All right. So I almost made that without getting verklempt. That was pretty good. I'm a very emotional kind of guy. So does anyone else have anything to like to say? Do you have something?
I do. I just want to thank everybody that supported me through this, my husband, my kids, but mostly my son. He kind of saw me in the schools anyways with PTA, and that's where I'll continue most of my advocacy, although I'm kind of energized now for school board meetings. So I will be here and be invested in that as I have a vested interest. I have the kids. I just, I want to say, not to the three that will be the next, because that's always, as we kind of all know, like, the moment of being on the board can be very fleeting. But anybody that chooses anywhere, not just Parma, to run for school board or to apply for an appointment, as I did, this is not, this is not a political seat. A lot of people, I think, treat this as a political seat. These are kids. These are careers, and this is a community. Politics have no business in this. And I think when people get into the mud of it, and what is actually going on, if you're paying attention and actually in the schools doing the work, I think that's very clear to see. I hope that anybody that ever chooses to serve the public, and that's what it is, you're serving the public and especially children whose futures matter, I think, I just hope by the grace of God that people can put any type of obligations or prior misconceptions aside when they choose to serve for the greater of everybody that matters. And again, thank you for this time, and I will probably not be on here again. I don't know. Yeah, I don't really see that happening. I think I can be louder. I can be louder off the stage, and that's where I think I'm going to do my advocacy now. So thank you.
Thank you. Cindy?
Yeah, Jason, did you have something?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for having me for a couple months. I don't want to forget everything Mr. Christ did over his time on the board.
Oh, absolutely.
Did a lot.
Very nice.
But I wish everyone could see what I saw over the last couple months. I met so many great people, so many, so many people just give everything they have for this district, for the kids, for the teachers, everything, bus drivers. Everyone makes such a great contribution. I wish everyone could see that. But, you know, just thank you. Guys definitely have my support. Love this district, and just looking forward to seeing what we can accomplish in the future.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, Cindy?
Okay. I wrote some remarks because I wanted to make sure I could get through them, and I didn't want to forget some of the things that I wanted to mention. So I'm going to kind of read most of it. It's been a very high privilege to serve on the Parma City Schools Board of Education, and to be have the opportunity to be a part of making a difference in the lives of children. It's really humbling, but it's deeply rewarding as well. If I thanked every administrator, every teacher, secretary, hall monitor, bus driver, student aide, maintenance or custodial professional, and all of the many others in our district, including students, for the work that they do every day, we could be here all night. Please know that you are appreciated for all that you do every day, far more often than is ever expressed. You're making a difference in the lives of others and in our schools. Thank you for that. The board members come and go. It's the nature of the business. What endures is the teaching and the learning that takes place in our classrooms every day, and also the caring for children that so many people do in this district every day as part of the work, some which is seen, some which is not seen by the public, and that makes that learning possible, thanks to all of those folks. I wish the new board well. Your success is the success of the district and the success of our students. May the board always demonstrate a passion for and a commitment to all children, not those, not just those that we know and love, that's pretty easy, but to every child. Each child needs you to be their advocate. It is a high calling. And may you also always demonstrate a commitment to public education. It is a cornerstone of our democracy, as it's here to educate every child, no matter who they are, where they live, who their parents are, what their beliefs are, or what their individual needs or circumstances are. However one chooses to educate their child, public education must be invested in, it must be supported, and it must be protected fiercely in every community. The board inherits many outstanding partnerships within the district and in the community, Parma Council PTAs, the Parma City Schools Foundation, the Parma City Schools Historical Museum, parent booster groups, student organizations, professional civic and community organizations, and more, all of whom are committed to the success of students in the Parma City Schools, value them, they're immense assets and great partners in education. Dr. Smilak, thank you for your tireless, outstanding leadership of Parma City Schools. The board is so very fortunate to have you leading the education of our students, and I hope the new members soon recognize that. You have assembled a talented administrative team and are making a difference in the lives of kids. Few know the time and effort that you have put forth in our schools and community, working towards the betterment of Parma Schools, recognizing students and staff, and building relationships across our three cities to the benefit of the Parma City School District. Thank you. Mr. Nucio, thank you also for your relentless efforts to carefully manage every dollar with which you're entrusted. While we may tease you from time to time for being a penny pincher, hooray for you. That's just exactly what a school district needs. Thank you, too, for all you do as the official secretary of the board, helping us be legally compliant in our work, even though we know Mrs. Barkowski and now Mrs. Evantco have a big hand in all of that. Thank you for your work. Mr. Vaughn, thank you for your leadership. On the Board of Education, you've worked hard and done an outstanding job of representing us in the district and in the community. We have all benefited from your guidance. It's been my pleasure working together and sitting next to you at board meetings. Thank you. To my board colleagues now and in the past, while we may have had a difference of opinion on any number of issues, which is a healthy thing and a really good thing for a board, it's been a pleasure working together in our efforts for Parma City Schools. Mrs. Schwark and Mr. Striker, thank you for your willingness to step in and step up, and both of you jumped right in. Mr. Vaughn said it so well. You just took on the responsibilities and you jumped right in. I think of all the things that, you know, kind of are the backstory of the board or that the public doesn't necessarily see, but it takes a lot to learn. And wow, I've been impressed by both of you. Thank you very much for the work that you've done. You've served Parma Schools very well. I'm especially grateful, not only for the collaboration with my colleagues, administrators, teachers, and support staff, civic business and community, leaders and partners, and residents, but also for the many relationships and friendships that have been forged along the way. I'm hopeful to continue that. Certainly, I have huge and special thanks to my husband Lloyd and our four children for their inspiration and support through many years on or off the board. I'm pretty sure it's not always easy to be married to a board member or the child of a board member or a volunteer. So with that, I say one more great big thanks to everyone for allowing me the opportunity to sit here and be involved. I'll certainly continue my advocacy for forty years on or off the board. I have many outlets for that advocacy and intend to continue with that. So thank you all, and best wishes for a wonderful holiday season.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I don't get to adjourn a meeting. Oops, sorry. Unfortunately, I don't get to adjourn a meeting just yet. So we have one public request to be heard form. So at this point, we open the meeting to the public to address the board with comments or concerns. We have one. The requests to be heard forms are completed and submitted in person to the administrative secretary prior to the start of the meeting. All statements shall be directed to the board president. As per policy zero-one-six-nine-point-one, comments that are repetitive, obscene, disparaging, abusive, irrelevant, and/or comments that constitute a threat will not be tolerated, and the speaker will be asked to stop speaking and/or to leave the meeting. Please note that various board policies exist which set forth processes and procedures to be used in investigating and addressing personnel issues and cannot be addressed in public. As per board policies, we may not be able to respond directly or address some issues at this time. If information is not readily available, we will respond in our next regular meeting. Three minutes is allotted per speaker. Please remember to state your name and address for the record, and would please Nancy Fedak come up to the microphone?
Thank you, Steve. Nancy Fedak, seven-seven-six-five, Arbor Way, Parma, four-four-one-three-four. I really don't have anything more to say because you've all said it so very nicely and eloquently. Angela, Jason, sorry I didn't get to know you better. Cindy, thank you so much for all of your service to the Parma City School Board, for being advocates for our children, and for being wonderful cheerleaders. Cindy, I need to single you out because I know you the best, but Parma Schools is so lucky to have had you as a cheerleader in a board position and as an advocate, not only for our students but also our staffs. And I thank you so very much on behalf of all the organizations you represent, we both represent. And I know you will continue to be an advocate for the school district as the years go on. And I also know that you will, too, Angela and Jason, you too. And I wish everybody the best of luck and Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right.
We can applaud that.
All right, two applause. Okay, who's coming? All right. So I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one-two dash six-three-seven to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one-two dash six-three-seven. The meeting is adjourned.
We didn't vote.
Whoa.
We didn't vote.
We have to vote?
We got to vote.
You know we don't vote. Oh, man. All right, go ahead. Ms. Nucio, please.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Striker?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.